Welcome everyone to the December Regular City Council Meeting. Will you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Councilman Parnell, could you lead us in the prayer?
Certainly. Our heavenly Father, we come before you this evening with grateful hearts for your blessing as we, Lord, enter into this Advent season. We are grateful for the most precious gift, and that is the gift of your Son. And we are grateful that Jesus is the reason for this season. And so, Father, we ask now for guidance of your Spirit tonight as we take care of the city's business. We ask for your blessing, your blessing upon this council, your blessing upon our police officers, our firefighters, and our residents, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Liz, can we do the roll call?
Absolutely. Councilman Alvarez, Councilwoman Weinbach?
Here.
Councilwoman Geishurst, Councilman Parnell?
Here.
Councilwoman Vasquez?
Here.
Councilwoman Ambler?
Here.
Councilman Zilly?
Here.
Okay, did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes? And is there a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes pass. Gets us to communications, correspondence, and announcements from the mayor. So hopefully this comes off as well as I intended it to. I'm not sure if you guys noticed, we had kind of a snowstorm on Saturday. And that disrupted, I know, right? Carrie's like, what? Trove to work and just came out early, just fought, yeah. With the storm impacting the, what would normally be Small Business Saturday, I thought I would issue this proclamation, under our proclamation procedures from the mayor. To all whom these presents may come greeting, whereas the city of Portage is known for its vibrant commercial corridors, which are home to various local businesses that contribute significantly to the unique character, quality of life, and economic health of our city; and whereas small businesses are the backbone of the American, Hoosier, and Calumet economies; and whereas Small Business Saturday, founded in 2010, is usually celebrated on the Saturday after Thanksgiving to encourage consumers to shop at local merchants during the holiday season; and whereas a significant winter storm seriously impeded the ability of many locally owned businesses within our city to remain open during their regular business hours, out of concern for the safety of their customers and their employees. Therefore, I, Austin Bonta, Mayor of the city of Portage, Indiana, hereby proclaim Saturday, December 6, 2025, as Small Business Saturday. In the city of Portage, and urge residents of our community to support local merchants, restaurants, and service providers on December 6, 2025, and throughout the year, to ensure the continued vitality of our local economy. I just want to stress that Small Business Saturday is kind of an established thing, so if you did venture out and you were able to do that last Saturday, that's wonderful. I also want to stress, you don't need a mayor to tell you when to shop local, shop local all year long. But in the spirit of promoting our small businesses, we have so many great ones, I felt like this was a really good opportunity to highlight it at a council meeting, which I think under normal circumstances, we don't always have the momentum to. So in a way, the storm kind of helped put a spotlight on it. Also on December 6 is our annual Christmas parade and Christmas tree lighting. We now have thirty-eight businesses and organizations participating in the parade. And I'd love to talk to you guys, I know that I'll be participating in the parade, if any council people would like to walk with me. Love to have you guys there with me at that four o'clock time. Yep, we're starting at the Alesworth Building and then walking down to the tree between the police station and the fire station, and it coincides with the park's craft show. So it's a pretty magical thing, it's looking like it's gonna be. And the weather appears to be pretty good. So we took all the bad weather and we reserved it for this last Saturday. And that's what I've got. Liz, we can go to the clerk treasurer's report?
Okay, at the November 4th council meeting, several resolutions were presented and approved to reduce funds in the 2025 budget. Today, you will be voting on additional appropriations to the various departments to make sure we have enough money to pay the anticipated bills for the rest of this year. I cannot stress enough to the department heads, before making any purchases, look at your appropriation reports to make sure there is money in your appropriation line items to pay for those purchases. Looking ahead to 2026, the city faces uncertainty due to the SCA-1, inflation, change in state funding, and the public, and public concerns, all while maintaining high taxpayer expectations. Although the 2026 budget will be extremely, extremely tight, the mayor, clerk treasurer, and department heads are working hard in collaboration to improve the city's finances and doing more with less. And I do want to thank the mayor clerk treasurer, the clerk treasurer's office, along with the department heads, for working diligently to make sure that we can make it to the end of this year and diligently for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. We get to petitions, remonstrances, and public input. I will open up the floor. If anybody would like to come up and state your name and your address, you can come and speak for the public input section of the meeting. Not seeing any. I will close the public input section of the meeting. And we'll go on to reports from the standing committees. Are there any standing committee reports tonight?
There are none, Mayor.
Okay. Gets us to city officials. Oh darn, I was just about to say the police chief couldn't make it, and then he like runs in. Do you want to go first? Yeah. Chief Crayle, you want to come up so that Mike has some time to catch his breath? Like you chased a guy all the way to City Hall, Mike, and caught him, but then immediately walked in.
Glad to see you showed up. I thought he was gonna use being busy as an excuse not to be here.
Senator Young is also joining us later today, so I'm so, no, I'm kidding.
We've had a fairly steady last couple of weeks here with the increased weather that we are a little bit ahead of time. The car accidents in the city have increased, obviously, with all of the snow that we have gotten. Call-wise, as a whole, we are a little bit down, with seventy-one percent being EMS calls, like I said, an uptick in car accidents. And the other calls are all kind of averaging out at this point. We do have three personnel in the Fire Academy currently. They will be graduating on December 19. I did send, this afternoon, I sent an email to you all with an invitation. I do believe, after I looked at the invitation, that it got a little skewed, but I think the appropriate information is on there. Would love to see you all come out and congratulate the Fire Department recruits. All of our apparatus are currently in service. We do have Marine One in Michigan City currently getting winterized. We were able to push it out till beginning of December to, before we pulled it out, because we did have some mild weather, and then when it hit us, it hit us pretty hard. We have not heard anything from our AFG grant. The federal government has started issuing grants again now that they are back open and functioning, but we have yet to hear anything. We had, at the beginning of the month, we did a smoke detector blitz. This is something that we really picked up back doing a couple of years ago, and it is highly successful. I'm happy to report that we gave out record numbers of free pizza coupons, which means that with the free pizza coupons, an increase in that means that more of our community that we go to have working smoke detectors in their homes. If they had a smoking work, or a smoking work detector, a working smoke detector, that they would, they would be awarded with a free pizza coupon. So we gave out, JJ's Pizza gave us a lot of coupons, we purchased a lot, the union purchased a lot with those. We gave all of them out, and it was a huge success. So that is really good for the community, that we have a community that is following safe smoke detector practice. Aside from that, that's all I really have. Does anyone have any questions? All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Randy, would you like to come and speak about just the recent events, snow-wise? We'll give Mike a little bit more time to catch his breath. We're all rooting for you, Mike, thank you.
Well, we've had a couple of winter storms in November, and it's not even officially the first day of winter, which is December 21st. So I'm really looking forward to that day and what it brings to us as a city. All right. So the first storm was thirteen inches, about eleven, eleven to twelve, thirteen inches, and it was a struggle. This time around was a nine-inch storm. And just to give you an idea, what are my, what we log in miles in our entire plowing equipment, we logged two thousand eight hundred miles, driving throughout the city, clearing roads. So then we had that one little blitz that came through last night, about one to two inches. So we did have crews out, working, keep our mains open, and then we're gonna be slowly clearing subs and stuff like that. So, but that's about it. Just a reminder, just to the public, two-inch snow ordinance, please remove those vehicles. It really helps us out to curb out subdivisions. I know there's been some social media talk on that, so, but anyways, we just like to have all our residents obey that. And then we've already had the question, hey, when are you gonna start leaf pickup? As soon as weather conditions allow us, we'll be back to leaf pickup. So sometimes we do have a break in December and it warms up, but we will do our best to pick up as many leaves as we possibly can. So that's about all I got, unless anyone else has any questions.
Randy, could, I'm so sorry, could you please repeat the two-inch ordinance so that people, you know, just, because I think there are a lot of people that don't realize.
Okay. Well, there is a ordinance that is set in the city of Portage, when a snowfall, or when a winter event happens and there's two inches or more on the, on the road surface, you have to remove your vehicle from the road. Get it off the street, in a driveway, park it somewhere else other than the road surface. So we do have some signs that we're gonna be making up next year and hitting some subdivisions. So just to remind people of the ordinance. And we may be looking at the ordinance to maybe strengthen it. So we got some language that might be coming up, so, but anyways.
And Randy, what would a resident need to do if by chance their mailbox gets knocked down because of the snowplowing?
Well, you could either go to our city website and go to our, the street department, there is a mailbox form that needs to be completed, so we could document what was done, what you claim that has happened, and then that is processed through our department. And what we usually do is we put a temporary one up in the meantime, and then when weather breaks, or in the spring, we do locates and then install a new mailbox. And that ordinance is set at a maximum amount of a hundred and seventy-five dollars, so.
Thank you. Just one more thing, I wanted to say that I have seen a lot of plow trucks and salt trucks out constantly lately, and I just want to tell you and your guys and gals how much we appreciate you.
We appreciate the kind words and your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Candiano, do you feel okay coming up? If you want to wait, that's okay.
He started it, so, while they were being cozy, we were actually out going to calls. So I was a little late, because we got five calls all within about five minutes on my way here, so, but you guys relax back there, you're good. He started it. So we did have a couple of cool things that happened recently. We had five officers that graduated from the academy. They'd been gone from us for, I think it's fifteen weeks now, so excited to get them back. Got a lot of positive feedback from, from the instructors out there and from the academy staff about how well they did. A couple of our officers won some awards, so excited to have them back. Three of them went right back into patrol, and two are finishing their field training and probably get released here, maybe in the next month. We did lose the three officers over the summer, or towards the end of the summer, and we just finished the hiring process a couple of weeks ago. So we have made job offers to three. They're in the process of trying to get their paperwork through PERF. We can't officially hire them until they get accepted through PERF. So hopefully, January sometime, we'll hire them and then start the process over. They'll get trained, have to go to the academy and all that, so. I think we've talked about that before, it's, you know, it's a five, six-month process till we actually see them out there, but we're not in terrible shape, so I'm pretty excited about that. Kind of a bittersweet thing, I talked a couple of meetings ago, that we had a murder a couple of years, eh, maybe a year and a half ago now, that we had investigated, and the, that individual had taken a plea on it. I think at the time, I mentioned it, just the amount of work that the Detective Bureau Patrol Division and especially Detective Birch had put into it, I think, was what led us to getting a plea out of that rather, and it was, it wasn't a slap-on-the-hand kind of plea. I think the work that they did on it is how we got that, and it didn't need to go to trial. But, so essentially, to follow up on that, there was a sentencing today, and that individual got the full sentence applicable, applicable under the law. So again, you know, it's, it's, it's obviously not a happy thing, but justice, justice worked the way it was supposed to for the family. I think the officers did a heck of a job on it, so again, just wanted to keep you guys up to date on that. Snowstorm. I don't know if people don't know, or they just don't care, if I'm being honest, about moving the cars. You would be shocked at the amount of backlash we get when we knock on doors, trying to get people to move their cars. You know what? We put out a post on it. The courteous thing to do, the right thing to do is move your car. You can get a fine, we can tow cars, that's the last thing we want to do in a snowstorm. Street Department's got their job, they're trying to keep the roads clear. With that comes fire calls and police calls. People are out, they crash, we have injuries, you name it. Crazy stuff happens in snowstorms. We would much rather respond to emergencies than mess with people for their cars, so if you're listening, just move your car. You know, are we gonna tow everybody? Are we gonna ticket everybody? Probably not, because there's too many offenders, but you know, you roll that dice, kind of like if you speed, you know, one day you might get stopped, and that's, that's your unlucky day. So the day your car gets towed is your unlucky day. But, you know, we're not in it for the business of making money off of that, we just want to get the dang streets clean, so that the people living in the neighborhood can have access in and out of their roads, and, and equally important, so that if we need to get to you, we can get to you. So hopefully, if you're listening, your neighbors don't want to move the cars, hopefully you can, you know, mention to them that it'd be the nice courteous neighbor thing to do, and if we have another snowstorm, you know, same kind of thing goes, we'll be out there in the neighborhoods doing as much as we can amongst the calls.
I appreciate the comparison to the speeding ticket situation, because it always is kind of funny to me. You get some people who say that the police are never pulling people over for speeding, and yet I see it happen. And then there's people who complain that they're always pulling everybody over, and it's crazy, and I'm like, clearly, both groups can't be right. And likewise, when it comes to cars in the street, you know, during a snowstorm, you hit the nail on the head, chief. We just want people to courteously move their car out of the way, even if there's a circumstance where somebody can't get the car fully into the driveway. Certainly, if a ambulance is blocked or a plow can't get through a street, we'd at least ask you to move it so that we can get the plow or the ambulance through. I noticed it online, and for some reason, I always invite people to come to these meetings, and they don't come, but that's okay. But I always say, you're welcome to come and talk to me and the chief, and then they don't, but you're always welcome to. But there seem to be people who think that this is a tyrannical thing, like how dare you tell me that I can't park in the street? And it's like, again, it's really more of a matter of we gotta get a plow through or an ambulance through, so please move the car during the snow, and if for some reason you can't, please at least move it if we knock on the door and ask you to, because certainly if we need an ambulance through or a plow, that's pretty important. Then on the other hand, you get people who apparently are like looking out their window hoping all their neighbors' cars get towed, because we get people who complain that you guys go out and knock on the doors. It's almost, it, if we can go biblical, it kind of reminds me of the story of Jonah, where he goes and he tells the people of Nineveh to change their ways, and then they do, and then he's like really mad because he wanted the city to be destroyed. It's like, there's apparently people who watch the police knock on the door, and then their neighbor politely moves the car, and then they're upset that they weren't towed. The goal's not to make money, the goal's not to ticket, it's not to punish, it's really just to get the streets opened up, and if that can be done with courtesy, that's fantastic. So I appreciate the patience of you and your officers. Also, Mike, I imagine if there's a car accident or a different kind of crime going on, that is gonna usually take priority over checking for that on patrol. I say that respectfully.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's great if we have a snowstorm and everybody stays home, and then we can go around and check on cars, but unfortunately, it seems like when we have a snowstorm, then people decide they want the strangest things, you know, like, I needed a loaf of bread, and I'm like, well, you know, you probably get it in a couple hours. I mean, the strangest things, we will find people in ditches and stuff they're out for. So you get snow, and you have this weird need to go out of the house. So I understand people have to go to work and there's emergencies, but it does seem like lots of people decide to travel when it snows. So yes, unfortunately, that increases, you know, slide-offs, crashes, you name it, you know. If it's really cold, then we're doing a lot of welfare checks. So yeah, it's, like you said, it's, you know, I didn't get into the job for everyone's approval, because if I did, then obviously I picked the wrong job, but we got messaged with angry people because we didn't tow cars, we got messaged from angry people because of the thought that we would tow a car, we got messaged from angry people because we knocked on doors. So we're just gonna do what we can, and some people will be happy and some won't, but again, the whole idea is so the road can be clear, and they can't do it when there are cars there, so. Yeah, so moving on from that fun topic, I looked at our calls this month, we were just under three thousand calls, so we're staying pretty steady. It's interesting, you brought up the traffic stops. We, our new system that we're running under, that we've switched over to at the first of the year, it's very specific, it makes it a lot easier for us to track calls. So just a couple of real quick things, we had, we made six hundred and eleven traffic stops last month, so we are making traffic stops. Those are verbals, written warnings, tickets, it's not, it's not always tickets, it's a little bit of everything. So we are out there stopping cars. We had a hundred and fifteen welfare checks, especially this time of year, just brings to mind mental health. It's a tough time of year for a lot of people. Like I said, in October alone, we had a hundred and fifteen welfare checks, a lot of those are mental illness, mental health problems, substance abuse problems. Sometimes it's just I couldn't get ahold of my, my dad, you know, I live out of town, but a lot of times it's, it's mental health or substance abuse issues there. And then we responded to over a hundred and fifty disturbances. Those were the higher lowlights of our calls, but I'll send them out to you guys, and I'll probably put it out on our, now that we've got it, I'll probably put it out on our Facebook page, so people can see the kind of stuff that we're going to, but you name it, it's, it runs the, it runs the whole end of the things that are out there, but those were some of the higher number ones that I thought were kind of interesting, so. Anything for me?
Thank you so much, chief, and thank you to your department.
Okay, thank you.
I was just kidding about the Senator Young showing up thing, although given all the back and forth, that would have been, that would have been a great deal of fun. I'll get him here one of these days, would you two are at your best, he'll, you know. All right. That'll get us to public hearing. So we have the Resolution 2525, additional appropriations for sanitation. Asking legal, is it okay to have the clerk treasurer explain what it is first, and then I can open up the public hearing?
You know, my suggestion would be to introduce them. And then the public hearing, right after.
For all of them?
All four of them.
For all four of them at once? Okay. So we'll start by, and then we still have to have a council person read them, at least by title?
Right.
Okay. So I'll ask Councilman Zilly, I'll go this way and around, could we have you read the Resolution 2525 for sanitation?
Resolution 25-25, a resolution in the city of Portage, Indiana, additional appropriation for the Portage Sanitation Department, city of Portage, Porter County, Indiana. Whereas the sanitation department in the city of Portage, Indiana, has determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. Let it reflect, let it reflect this has been read in its entirety.
Thank you. And then we have Resolution 2528, additional. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh.
I would do the public hearing now, on that.
Oh, oh, I see, and then bring them all up at the end.
Anyway, we only have to explain once, and then have the public hearing, and it's in time, so if someone has-
I understand, and I'm sorry for misunderstanding.
No, no, it's my fault.
Okay. So what I'll do is I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on Resolution 2525? Is there anyone here to speak on Resolution 2525? Is there anyone here to speak on Resolution 2525? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. And then, so you're saying then we have another one introduced and then public hearing, is that right?
Right.
Okay. Councilwoman Wydenbach, could you do the reading for Resolution 2528 for Police Department?
Absolutely. Resolution 25-28, a resolution of the city of Portage, Indiana, additional appropriation for the Portage Police Department, city of Portage, Porter County, Indiana. Whereas the Police Department of the city of Portage, Indiana, has determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. Let the record reflect, it's been read in its entirety.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing for Resolution 2528. Is there anyone here to speak on Resolution 2528? Anyone here to speak on 2528? Anyone for 2528? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. And that'll get us to Resolution 2532 for additional appropriations for the park. Councilwoman Ambler, could you read that one for us?
Yep. Resolution 25-32, a resolution of the city of Portage, Indiana, additional appropriation for the debt service, city of Portage, Porter County, Indiana. Let the record reflect that this has been read in its entirety.
Thank you. I will open up the public hearing. Is anyone here to speak on Resolution 2532? Anyone here to speak on Resolution 2532? Anyone to speak on 2532? With that, I will close the public hearing. And then we've got Resolution 2533, additional appropriations for year-end. Council president, could you read that one for us?
My pleasure. Resolution 25-33, a resolution of the city of Portage, Indiana, additional appropriation for various departments, city of Portage, Porter County, Indiana. Whereas the clerk treasurer of the city of Portage, Indiana, has determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget now, and therefore, let the record reflect that the document has been read in its entirety.
Thank you. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on Resolution 2533? Anyone here to speak on 2533? Anyone here to speak on 2533? With that, I'll close the public hearing. And the reason I ask three times for anybody watching at home is that it's just good record-keeping that it was asked for on three times. There's no particular rule, but it's just seems to be best practice, so I try to follow it. So we have them all proposed, and looks like our lawyers are having a good time, so. Is there, is it possible if somebody desired to make a motion to approve all four at once, or is it still the recommendation? Okay.
Because they're all additionals, involved, the motion can be that the resolutions on the agenda can be approved, if that's the motion someone would like to make.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolutions 25-25, 25-28, 25-32, and 25-33.
Second.
We have a, I almost said a resolution, a second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Believe they all pass. That'll get us to new business, and that's the introduction of ordinances. So we have Ordinance 2548, tax anticipation warrant. Councilman Parnell, would you be willing to read that for us?
Certainly. Ordinance number 25-48, an ordinance authorized in the city of Portage, Indiana, to make temporary loans to meet current running expenses for the use of general fund of the issuer in anticipation of and not in excess of current tax levied in the year 2025 and collectible in the year 2026. Authorizing the issuance of temporary loan tax anticipation warrants to evidence such loans and the sale of such warrants to the Indiana Bond Bank, and appropriating and pledging the taxes to be received in such funds to the punctual payment of such warrants, including the interest therein. Let the record reflect that the ordinance has been read in its entirety.
I'll make a motion to suspend.
We have a motion to suspend, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to suspend and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Believe that passed. And then, do we have any discussion or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passed. That gets us to Ordinance 2549, amending the salary ordinance 2025. Councilman Zilli, would you mind reading that for us?
Ordinance number 25-49, let the record reflect, this has been read in its entirety. Motion to suspend.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, I'm sorry, a motion to suspend and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Does that pass?
Motion to adopt.
We have a motion to adopt and a second. All in favor, please signify by-
Well, hang on, can we say what it is, please?
My apologies. Go ahead.
Say what it, like, what's changing.
Oh.
You want me to?
Liz, you could, yeah.
Everybody listen. Okay. We're just, we're adding to the 2026 budget, the GIS specialist, he's getting paid 50% by the plant and 50% by the storm. So that, we had to, the last ordinance, salary ordinance change was to put him in for 2025, and this is to put him in for 2026.
Well, now this is-
Sorry, guys. This is the 2025. He was hired, so he's, the next one will be to put him in for 2026.
So the first one is the what you do for this year, and then the following is the second year, because it needs to be technically both years, yeah? Did we already have a motion and a second? Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we're good. And then that gets us to 2550, amending salary ordinance for 2026. Councilwoman Wydenbach, could you read that one for us?
Salary ordinance budget year 2026, ordinance 25-50, an ordinance establishing the amount of salaries and compensation to be paid to all appointed employees and officers of the city of Portage, Porter County, Indiana for the year 2026. Be it and hereby yours ordained by the common council of the city of Portage, Indiana, as follows. Let the record reflect, it's been read in its entirety.
So Liz, just to clarify, it's the same thing that was just done, but for the following year? Is that fair to say?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to suspend and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Does that pass?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to- Who seconded it? Tyler made the motion, so now we need a second.
Would you like to second, or?
Second.
So now we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I think we're good there. That gets us to ordinance, shoot, where we at? Here we are. Fifty, 2551, amending ordinance 2538, ambulance services. Penny, could you read this one for us?
Ordinance 25-51, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Portage, Indiana, amending ordinance 25-38, section 38.41 of the Portage municipal code regarding city ambulance services. Whereas the common council of the city of Portage, Indiana recognizes the importance of providing ambulance services and properly building and collecting for said services, whereas the common council further finds that the city ambulance services ordinance needs to be updated. Let the record reflect that this has been read in its entirety.
Liz, would you mind explaining this? Or is that, either-
We need a motion to suspend, I think, first.
Okay.
Motion to suspend. Second.
We have a motion to suspend and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Does that pass? Okay.
Motion to adopt.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Liz, did you want to say anything, or?
Yes. Okay, well, what happened, we just added a phrase in here to, or a paragraph saying the operation and payment of performance-based allocation shall be subject to availability of funds, and that shall be determined by the mayor and the clerk treasurer. What this does is it gives, if we don't have the funds to put that into their capital or their equipment fund, then we can, if we don't have the funds to put it in there, we don't, we're not obligated to put it into there.
It allows us to have that review, which I think probably should have been there the whole time, so it's, I would call it a language cleanup or a procedure cleanup.
Correct.
Did we already, so we already have a motion to approve and a second? Yep. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passed. Other matters not already considered by the council? Liz, I apologize, because I either, or did I forget something? Because, okay, I was going to say these-
We're done.
Yeah. When it comes to the meeting for the ninth, I think there's been an advertisement for a meeting on the ninth. I think I mixed up, not realizing a date's been nailed down, or maybe it was set at some point, so if we're good to proceed with that, I just want to make sure we brought it up to the council, if anybody didn't know, besides me.
6:30 on the ninth? Is everybody available that, that day? Tuesday, the ninth? 6:30?
Yes.
Okay, then we have a quorum. We'll have a quorum for next Tuesday.
All right. Well, thank you. I don't know if I'm showing up, we might have Victoria running the meeting. Okay. Any other matters from the council? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.